Thanks for having the report of board members. Start with off with Rick.
On September eighteenth, I went on the learning walk at Ray High, where I was able to observe three classes.
I turn your microphone.
Sorry about that. Okay, on September eighteenth, I went on the on the learning walk at Ray High, where I was able to observe three classrooms and get feedback to the teachers. I was in a group with a gentleman named Mr. David Johnson, who was like a rock star in that building. The students were really drawn to him, and I just found that to be a bit amusing because everywhere we went, he was like, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson. It was just, it was his middle school that actually feeds into Ray High. And it was great to hear from the leadership president to see and feel their enthusiasm for the work that they do. And I was able to talk to several of them as well to kind of get a feel for what they need as administrators in the various schools around the city. And on the nineteenth, I went to the Government Relations Committee meeting where Congressman Emmanuel Cleaver II addressed the committee with information about what's going on in DC. He reported that for funding that was earmarked for the city is no longer earmarked for the city and that we could just look for those changes. And he then talked about the redistricting of the state and how we all could and should get involved in learning what that is all about. I found that to be a very informative meeting. And on the twenty-fourth, I went to the chamber luncheon where Jeff Hurst presented as the chamber president. I never knew he was as funny as he is. That's one funny guy. And that meeting too proved to be pretty informative. And on the sixth of October, actually, I was at Ray High once more for a scholarship eligibility workshop, where all the eleventh graders gathered in a room. It was about seventy-five, eighty or so juniors that were in the room with Great Jobs KC. And the whole purpose of that meeting with Great Jobs is to get the students prepared for to apply for a fifty thousand dollar scholarship, where you're only eligible as an eleventh grader to apply for that scholarship. While Ray High has gotten a jump on that process, I would challenge Ray South to do the same, to get in touch with Great Jobs KC so that they too can apply for that fifty thousand dollar scholarship. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. President, on September the ninth, I was able to join Dr. Martin Knox and part of a team in an enrollment meeting, strategic enrollment meeting to learn some how the district is working on strategies for improving enrollment in the Raytown School District. And I think that we're headed in the right direction with the way they're going. And on September the eighteenth, I went to the Demographic Proposal Community Forum at Raytown High School and was able to look at the maps and the new presentations and ideas for improving, again, enrollment and dividing up in our district in a way that it would be good for all. I'll just put it like that. On October tenth, I went to the Hall of Fame Luncheon. Congratulations to all the inductees that were inducted into the Raytown School Board Hall of Fame. And then last week, my family and I worked to help contribute to the food bank or the food mobiles that travel around from church to church here in Raytown. There is a shortage at some of the food banks that are sending out. So I would encourage anybody that has extra and you have a food bank in our community to give. If you have some extra, go home and give to that. That's my report.
Good evening, everybody.
I also had a busy month. I went to a lot of sporting events this month. I got to see Raytown softball versus Raytown South softball. Great game, twenty oh to the Raytown softball team. Also got to see the Raytown soccer team against the Raytown South soccer team. That was also a two-one to Raytown. So good job to the Blue Jays. I also got to go to the Hall of Fame Luncheon. So again, congratulations to everybody who is in the part of that Hall of Fame group. Also got to go to the 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 meeting, the legislative meeting with Edna, with Emmanuel Cleaver, just to talk about, you know, government relations. And I also got to do a walk with our superintendent, Dr. Martin Knox and Ms. Cole. It was great to just see, I've never been to Raytown Success Academy, and so it was great to just see, you know, how the kids are interacting, how the kids are doing there. And from that interaction, I can tell that from what when I was teaching, it's in such a different place now. And I want to just commend Ms. Cole for everything that she's doing over there. Also, last thing I want to say are Raytown cheerleading. I was at the state cheerleading regionals. First time that Raytown cheerleading got to gets to go to state. First time in seven years, they placed fourth in their division. And I want to give a shout out to Ms. Kaitlin Sampson. She's done an amazing job over there turning that cheerleading program around. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Mr. Newton. Mr. President, I would first like to thank Dr. Martin Knox for taking her time out with one hand to take me on some school visits. We started at Raytown Middle. And we began, I would like to thank Principal Cooper, her administrative team, and several staff members during the visit. We visited the cafeteria where I visited with many students getting feedback on meals overall during the dining experiences and discussed academic and social support with the administration. And we had several conversations about the superintendent and gathered their perspectives to the student engagement, well-being. The the business that they provided a lot of valuable information about how they feel about the school, the superintendent, the learning experiences and and the dining experiences that they're getting over there. I also went to the demographic community forum. When I attended this demographic community forum, I ran into, and I had some big shoes to fill up, I ran into a young man that was like really in gold with Mr. Dr. Moore. And the young man's name was Benjamin Brown. And I know we can get the parents' perspective and all that, but I wanted to talk to Benjamin Brown. He's a fifth grade student, and he goes to Little Blue Elementary. And he expressed to me how much Little Blue Elementary meant to him. And that's what I wanted to do. I wanted to talk to different people from staff to students, but students mean a lot because I got in this job for the students, the biggest, you know, our biggest person that we really should care about. I got his perspective. He gave such a huge commercial for Little Blue Academy and Dr. Moore. So, and I'm sure Mr. Scott can back me up on this. Those are big shoes to fill. Dr. Moore had some big shoes to fill. When we went over there, we had to talk. So I had about a fifteen minute conversation with him uninterrupted. Five or six hugs exchanged. And I told him, I said, I'll be over there to see you. We talked from everything about what was his favorite food to his favorite teacher to his favorite subject to everything. So I said, I'll be over there to see you. Again, Dr. Martin Knox said she'd meet me over there. So my next stop, I went over there and I seen him at Little Blue. We went over there and seen him. And once I got over there, I called, I got him out of class. And we, my first stop was to see him, talk to Benjamin, got him out of class, and he came up and seen us. Our second stop, we talked to Ms. Wells in the second grade, where we seen them participating in calendars and planning and observing, you know, the strong student engagement. The next stop, we went to Ms. Ms. Missy's room, we seen in the self-contained class and the interactive sessions that she had with the kids. It was very, very interactive, where we seen them doing projects of enjoy enjoying experiences. Then our third stop, we stopped at Benjamin's room, Ms. James. If you guys don't know Ms. James, she's a fifth grade teacher over there. Phenomenal. I encourage anybody, if you get an opportunity to stop by Ms. James' room. I had forgot some of this math. She was doing fractions. It was the most interactive thing I've ever seen. I sat down, grabbed the seat, and remembered my fractions. And then I also got to meet, I also went to Q's Corner. That's where they keep the dog at. And I had a phenomenal time. When I go to schools, I get the whole experience with the school. So I enjoyed that whole thing. I also had the opportunity to go and I got some kid that does the NIL thing. And we went to Lincoln, we donated a ton of shoes. But before I go too far, I wanted to thank Dr. Martin Knox. I want to thank Dr. Dread Scott, Dr. Smithney for just being a part of that experience over there at that school. My third stop, we went up to the Success Academy. And I'm gonna piggyback off what Mr. Jordan said. Hey, Ms. Cole is doing phenomenal over there. We had the opportunity to go and see what that environment is like. And with what she has, she's doing a phenomenal job. And that staff over there is doing a phenomenal job. I'm hats off to the people we have in Raytown. And I always said that I'm just hats off to everybody that we have in Raytown and everything that we do with what we have in Raytown. So I just want to, you know, if I don't commend you guys enough and I don't stop by enough and I don't say it enough, I want to say that my hat is off to you guys for the work that you do. And I'm just extremely happy for it. With with my reflections on this, this month's visits is a community engagement opportunity reinforce the importance of the direction and connection of the student, staff, and families. Hearing from the students and Benjamin Brown and seeing the dedication of our educators remind me of the way and why we work so vital. Each student, each visit not only strengthens the district's community relations, but also provides valuable perspective to guide future decisions and impact on our schools. Thank you, God, so much for everything you do. That's it.
All right. Thank you. So this past month, I I got to cheat a little bit because I got some grandkids in the district. So I participated in a couple of events at Fleet Ridge Elementary. And I like to say the same thing about Ms. Glasgow over there and what and the teachers there. There's a lot of involvement from the parents. It's, we did, the most recent event was we walked the school and everybody walked to school and had donuts set out on the front lawn there. And before school started, sat for about thirty minutes. And each time, even like back to school night, I got to sit and talk to parents. And I tried not to, I tried to be undercover, over the cover board member. But somebody always told on me. And so I got to talk to some parents. And they were just expressing some excitement about just some of the things that they see and what they think the improvement was. So the good news is I didn't really get any complaints. But Fleet Ridge is really doing a phenomenal job. Also went with Mr. Newton to Raytown Success Academy. And I'll just say ditto. Really appreciate you taking us everywhere, showing us everything. And and I'm looking forward to some of the things that we can do to help you to do even better, even with with some better resources. And so I thank the board members for for participation and and just getting involved on every level. And so and showing support because I think that's what connects us all as a community and shows people that that we really care. And so that's it for board members' report. And we'll go to the next item.
This is the report of superintendent.
So good evening, Chairman Burton, Vice Chairman Newton, members of the Raytown Quality School District Board and members of the Raytown Quality School District Community. I would like to begin by saying thank you to our board members. As you heard in much of their reports, they were able to communicate what they've observed in our schools. And I just want to say thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules, not just for school visits, but for community activities as well. I think you really send the message that your purpose here on the board is to do exactly what you said you were going to do when you were elected, and that is to advocate for our teachers and for our children. And so I just want to say thank you. While he's not here, Michael Watson also toured some schools with me. The last school we went to was Eastwood Hills, and it was just nice to see. And I didn't know and learn that he was bilingual in terms of communicating with our students. So it was really nice to see all of our board members in action, whether it was at a learning walk or just the school visit or community activity or community event. I want to say thank you. I also want to echo the sentiments about the things that are happening in our school, where we are always focused on academia and making sure that we're providing our children with quality environments where they can learn and achieve. But I also want to take a moment to talk about educating the whole child. And what do I mean by educating the whole child? I'm talking about the extracurricular activities that our children engage in, from athletics to cheer to dance. I have been able to see our students in action, and every time I'm there, I just smile. And I'll just go through the list of many of the events that I've had the opportunity to observe. I've been able to see volleyball, both middle and high. I've seen tennis, and I will just tell you, it's my first time going to a tennis match, and it was my objective to make it to a tennis match, and they were surprised to see me. And I was just amazed at what they were able to do. So kudos to tennis. I went to cross country. I've seen football, middle and high. I've seen softball. I saw soccer. I see our cheerleaders. I see our band. I've seen our dancers, cardets, and Blue Jays. And I will just say, I'm just blown away at every time. And I'm not just being partial because I'm the superintendent in Raytown. I'm just truly being authentic to let you all know I am proud of you and the work that you do in the classroom and outside of the classroom, not only for the work of our teachers, but for our coaches and our dance coaches, our athletic coaches. You just do an amazing job, and I'm just grateful for the work that we participate in. And I want to publicly apologize to Raytown South volleyball team because the other day I did the unthinkable. I wasn't planning to go to the volleyball game, but I was going to the tennis match, and I wore blue. And it was a Battle of the Birds volleyball. And I was challenged because I had on blue when I walked into the Ray South gym. And I just had to tell them it wasn't on my agenda that evening. Ms. Johnston is here, but I will publicly apologize. I'm not partial, so I won't give scores or any effect. When I go to the games and both teams are playing, I am cheering for every child. And so, but I will apologize for having on blue to Ray South, but thanking Ray High for having the blue and not criticizing me. But anyway, with that being said, I'm just grateful for all the work that's taking place. I also had an opportunity to meet with our superintendent ambassadors. And when I tell you they are the most amazing young people you'd ever want to meet, you know, having that conversation because what it does echo is student voice. Their voice is so important to me and the work that we do, and they are our primary customers. And if they're not happy and satisfied, then we're not doing our job. And so I just want to thank our superintendent ambassadors for bringing their voice forward. I also want to take a moment just to congratulate our Hall of Fame inductees from this past weekend and to give kudos to our communications department for the work that they do. I think people see the end product and don't realize the type of work that goes in behind it. It was absolutely amazing, amazing for them to put such an event together. But it was even more so to hear the success of our Raytown graduates and the recognition that we're receiving from them as well. And I can't wait to see many more. So if you know someone who should be in the Hall of Fame, please make sure those recommendations are forwarded. Items eight point one, point two, point three, and point four are all data reviewed and they are in the board packet for your for your viewing pleasure. And item eight point five, superintendent's goals, those goals will continue. But until November the sixth, superintendent's goals will not be presented again until I receive data that will be released from DESI so that I can make sure that we're up to date and moving in the appropriate direction. So again, eight point five will be presented in depth a little later, once that information is released. Item eight point six, I ask for Mr. Houston to come forward because he will be providing an update regarding our Raytown High School parking lot. As we indicate, we will always provide information as it is relevant and pertinent to the success of our schools. And that also includes our infrastructure. Mr. Houston.
Good evening, Dr. Martin Knox, Mr. Burton, and members of the board. I just want to give you a thousand foot view of what's going on at South High. At the end of that, I'll be able to answer any questions that you would like to have. We initially found the gas leak on eight eleven. Eight seventeen was initial site visit by Well Done Foundation after we went work through Spire and the Raytown Fire Department. Well Done Foundation mobilized on eight twenty-one. To date, we're right under a million dollars in costs. We're around nine hundred ninety-one thousand to date. That includes all the site work. That includes the generator. That includes the chiller to where we can have air conditioning at the site. So far, there's a total of one hundred and sixty-eight wells underneath that parking lot on three separate loops. The west loop tested fine, is being closed back in, so there's no hole there. The center loop seems to be the most problematic. We have fourteen wells repaired there, five more that we've drilled out. We have to repair the plumbing line that goes down in. So we'll have a total of twenty-seven wells thus far that we've repaired or replaced, with twenty-four of those being on the center loop. As we get things done, we retest. Sometimes the gas migrates one side to another. When that happens, it causes us to open up more parking lot. So we're pushing to get this thing wrapped up, but we still, there's still a lot of unknowns out there. See anybody have any questions about what I've said so far?
Do we have estimated time?
So we don't. We're looking to have it done as quickly as possible. And the reason I can't give an estimated time is we'll get a series of wells done and think we have everything done and cemented in place. The infrastructure in the ground is a rock formation. Whenever we've, if you think about water like in your yard or anywhere, you put, you get it contained one spot and it goes the path of least resistance. So what we've been seeing is we get it, we get it done and think we're good, and then it will start creeping up somewhere else. It's going better than anticipated. Our goal is to have everything done as quickly as possible because it affects, even though kids are in school, it does impact the building quite a bit with after-school activities with that north parking lot being closed. So teachers and staff are parking on the south side of the building. Kids are parking on the eighty-third street down by softball area. When we have events there, it depends on what event, but a lot of times they're parked them on the eighty-third street by softball. Then they have a series of signs and staff to get them up, patrons and people coming to see the game up, and then go down the hallway into the into the gyms.
Where are, where, I'm sorry. You had to say that.
The money.
Where's it coming from?
So currently, we had some money left in twenty nineteen bond funds. So we're paying for, we're paying for it out of that currently. We've also having heavy discussion with insurance companies about what they're are are not going to pay. We've not come to a resolution on that yet. They came out, they flew out a week and a half ago, two weeks maybe for a site visit. I spent a couple hours with them going through everything as well as Kurt Schuck, owner of the Well Done Foundation, who's really spearheading the project for us. They took lots of pictures, lots of discussion on what's going on. It's really a point for us to educate them on what's going on because nobody's really ever had this happen before. So that's where the insurance company is a little bit hesitant on where they're at. But I'm hopeful that through the education that we provide for them and some pressure we're putting on them that we'll continue towards quarter resolution.
Is this outside of our property?
No, it's smack dab in the middle of our parking lot.
Okay.
It doesn't.
Mr. President, so we're assured that everyone is safe.
Yes. Yep, hundred percent. And some of the safety measures we put in place for that is we have, one, we monitor it every day onsite with with the construction folks onsite. We also bought monitors that are, that go up inside. Also, all the doors on the north end of South High have a methane detector in there that signals, says it's very loud, that signals that there's a problem. We also put them at Hudson on the far south end of the building to be able to do that. And then, like I said, we monitor every day as well.
So there's no timeline. I guess there's also no budget.
Correct. It's a great project when it comes to timeline and budget. Like I said,
If you're working on it.
We stay on them every day and make sure everything's going the best it can.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
So the money where we, where we're getting it from, the twenty nineteen bond, we got enough.
So that, that, so that balance was around two billion before we started. We spent, like I said, right around nine hundred ninety-one thousand, and we still have more to come. So based off what I'm seeing now, we're looking, we think we do. But then again, we're at twenty-seven out of one hundred sixty-eight wells.
Mr. Houston, can you also let them know what we put a hold on capital projects?
Yes. So all of our capital projects, we pretty much just just stopped until we had a plan of what we were doing. We had updated our, we had a twenty nineteen assessment that said, here's all the needs that we have in the building. We were working with our architects and New Kirk Novak to look at other projects we could do with those funds. Those have all just been stopped in their tracks until we get finished with this project, and then we'll see what, if anything, we can do. Any more questions?
I think we'll get together for a capital improvements meeting this month.
Perfect. Thank you.
And before we enter into item eight point seven, as our student representatives move towards the table, I just want to thank the community. I know I said it before, but I just want to thank everyone for your patience as we are working through, as Mr. Houston said a few moments ago, the unknown unforeseen anomaly of this matter occurring and just trusting us when we say we don't have any new updates or we don't know a timeline or we don't know, because we don't know. And we're relying on the experts, and the experts don't know. But when we get information, we will continue to communicate that so we're being transparent and open as we move along the way. And now our representatives, hi Savannah.
Good evening, board. So we're going to talk about what we've been doing this past month and also what's coming up. We have started our toilet talks, which are flyers we make every week that has events, that means games, matches, or activities that are coming up in our school. And we put them on the stalls, the stall doors of every bathroom so students know what's coming up in the school and how to be involved.
Good evening, board. The next thing we have is about our freshman academy. Our freshman academy is doing pretty well. It's doing the best it can be. And the biggest thing we have right now is that for our spirit weeks and the spirit days, we make two sets of posters now. We have one set that the students can see whenever they walk into the building. And then we have one set downstairs specifically for the freshmen. And we've gone a bunch of compliments on it, so it seems like we're doing a pretty good job on making them. And also, I would like to thank our committee because our committee is doing a great job on getting these Spirit Week posters done in time, even though it's now twice the work, we're getting them always done on time. So it's going great. The next thing is about the freshman academies bulletin boards. We're always updating them and we're thinking of new ideas for them, so we're making sure they're involved and included, and we're making sure they don't feel like they're left out of the school. Our freshman counselor, Ms. Sofa, she wanted to specifically do two bulletin boards where we can do one bulletin board for, to recognize students, freshman academies students' birthdays. So it'll get updated every month where we mention like their birthdays, and that's a way we can recognize them. And then the second board, we're going to put their data on there, so such as like good attendance, good grades and stuff like that. It's just to encourage these students. And yeah, that's what we have right now for freshman academy.
Good evening, board. Recently, on October fourth, we had our homecoming where it was a really big success this year. We sold more tickets than we ever have. I think we had about like four hundred or five hundred tickets sold. And you can tell like when I woke, when I walked in, it was packed. Like, there was a lot of people there. I was like, I was like, I just knew it was packed.
I'm sorry, what's bagging me?
What?
What does that mean?
Packed?
Yeah, packed.
Oh, there are a lot of people.
Okay, so this Friday, we are doing our annual haunted hallways. Our, we prep about two weeks beforehand. Um, our, um, we prep about hmm two weeks beforehand. So we, um, it's where we let elementary students come in, and we have tables full of candy. And basically they come trick or treating, and then we have this like little haunted house they can go into if want, they want to be. Um, we've made sign up sheets and we've added more like um scares such as werewolves, witches, and zombies for our haunted hall. Um, so yeah, that, it's going good so far.
Okay, so the last thing we have for you guys is our Stuko Districts, which is on the twenty seventh of October, and it's hosted at Santa Fe High School for this year. We're currently vice president for uh Stuko Districts for our Trails West, and we're running for president next year. We just finished our video for districts and for our running for uh president. I think it's pretty funny. I haven't seen the full thing, but um Donovan, the person who is recording this video has, tells us that it's really, really good and it's really funny, so I have really high hopes. And we are hosting five block talks at districts, which is whenever they go into like little breakout rooms and we tell them about different activities we're doing at the school. So the five can include like haunted hallways and stuff like that. And in those block talks, we have one upperclassman and one um underclassman, that way that next year the underclassmen know what they're doing, they can then teach newer people.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Great job.
That concludes the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. Next, we have Ray of Hope.
Good evening, President Burton, Board of Education, Dr. Martin Knox. This evening, we are doing something a little different. The person who we are recognizing for the Ray of Hope has no idea that they are being recognized this evening. So they will be surprised. What I can tell you about this person is that they work tirelessly on behalf of the district and that they care greatly about this community, and we have a little bit more about this person in the video.
When we started the school virtually, it kind of felt like COVID all over again. And COVID for me was kind of like a rough year. I didn't really like it. My days were kind of boring. And the only thing I had going was like football practice, but then when school started over again, I was able to interact with other people and like do more things than just football practice in a day, and it helped a lot, both like mentally and like morale, I guess, for myself.
Just starting virtual, like for me, it was way harder to do schoolwork because like I'm more active in school. Like, I'm not good at homework outside of school because I just get caught up in like my phone, games.
Starting virtually, I kind of didn't like it just because I'm not a virtual person, so it kind of felt weird. Also, I didn't get to see my classmates' face and like meet them, so it kind of felt weird. But once we got into the building and also like met each other, that's when I kind of felt excited more.
I first met Josh Hughes at Raytown South Middle where he was one of my building APs. The year before was pretty stressful, and the year him and Carl Calcare came in, it was like the whole building got turned around, and a lot of that is thanks to Josh himself.
One thing I really appreciate about Josh is he isn't just talk, he walks the walk. Josh was in the trenches with everybody, helping figure it out. He came to our meetings to update it with dirt on his hat and boots and jeans. It was a lot of questions at the beginning and a lot of uncertainty. He really did his best to keep us updated, even though he had nineteen other active school sites, plus all the other buildings that he deals with.
His personality is just someone that you can go to for anything, and he doesn't make you feel dumb about it. He hears you out, and then he gives you a direct response, which is something I've always appreciated in leadership.
I've just been able to see like the true, like the magic that Hernan does for like, like all the classes and stuff, because like online, you're very limited. But here you get to like truly be hands on with the amazing classes that you have.
The stuff that we do in this class, the people we get to talk to, the places we get to go, it's just you can't do it virtually. You have to be here.
It's been really great to be back in the building, thanks to Josh and his hard work.
Well, I've never met the man, but I already, I love the guy just for being able to get me in here and save my junior year. Being able to come in here and do the things that I really wanted to do, that's the best part. So thank you, thank you.
We're extremely grateful that he was able to get us back to the classroom as soon as possible because I feel like a lot of people would have dropped just because of how repetitive and boring it would have gotten instead of being hands on. And I'm not, I'm not even looking at the business classes too, like the cosmetology, the HVAC, all the construction classes, just we're all thankful that he was able to get us back here as soon as possible.
I really appreciate the care he's put into like making sure that we get in the class back as soon as possible.
I'm very grateful for being back in person because virtual was not gonna be able to work for me. So I'm really grateful that we got back in person and also for me to just meet everyone and just see everyone, it's really great.
The fact y'all guys back in here this fast, when they was projected not to come back till the end of October is real, real special. And just being able to have us all back in here and seeing all my friends again, thank you.
I like to say that I appreciate the work you've done and like the effort you put in and for us to get back at the school. We may not have everything we have, but at least having school in person, I know it helped me and I know it helped a lot of people. I'd just like to say thank you.
So before he goes to sit down, it's funny because he knows that. So, you know, while we capitalize on the work that you've done around South and just truly, as Mary said, in the trenches, in your boots and spying on me when I'm spying on you. Um, and answering the calls and calling at four o'clock in the morning, and people don't see what you do behind the scenes. And I think I did a post a few moments, months ago, where it was just you walking across the parking lot where I said, I appreciate, I appreciate you.
No one signed up for a public comment period, so we'll move to our next agenda item. Which is board committee reports. Uh, is there a report from the finance committee? Uh, policy review committee. Let me back up for a minute. Uh, there's a motion. Motion made a second. Uh, capital improvement committee meeting, we'll uh, Joshua, get that on the the schedule before the next meeting, probably uh next week or a week after, whichever. Probably put it on the as your schedule permits. Probably not have to wait till evening. Um, community engagement committee. Any report?
Not a true report. Well, I guess we could. We just met today for the first time um this year, and we have a few things in the works, so I'll get a we'll have more to report at a later meeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, curriculum, professional development. Is there anything from citizens advisory? All right, that's all our committees. Vote to uh approve the minutes of the policy committee. Motion passes. There, Raytown Education Foundation report.
I do. Uh, I have the Raytown Educational Foundation report, October thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Grant report, the Welcome Center. In twenty twenty four through twenty twenty five, uh ref teaching and learning grant was awarded to Lynn Tarvin and Yasmin Cervantes to create a welcome center for the immigrant families who required an interpreter to complete enrollment. They reported on the grant uh during the twenty twenty five Ref Share the Love Community Breakfast, and a guest was so inspired by the idea that she contributed to the Welcome Center. Here is a report from the Welcome Center. In the past, we have had twenty to thirty percent of families still not enrolled by the first day of school. This year, we used a portion of the contributions to purchase gift cards as an incentive for families to register their kids by the end of July. The names of registered families were drawn for the gift cards. The incentive worked as over fifty percent of families were registered by the beginning of August and one hundred percent were enrolled by the first day of school. Thank you for supporting us. Ref Platinum Pillar Foundation, on September eighth, twenty twenty five, ref attended the Raytown School Board of Education meeting to honor Ref Platinum Pillar Foundation. Uh, Gwen Mondorf, Bob Kessel, and Charlotte, Charlotte Belgium. Jessica Bernard and Anthony McDonald represented Gwen Mondorf. Twenty twenty five trivia night report. Trivia night took place on Saturday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty five. It was successful and a, and, and a fun event. We had fourteen teams sign up, which is a record. We had a plethora of wonderful raffle and silent auction items. A repeat team that has attended all of our trivia nights won. Congratulations to Scam Likely. What a way to have fun while supporting Raytown students and staff. Ref thanks all the teams, volunteers, raffle and silent auction donors, along with our generous sponsors, Mary and Wayne Oler. I think I pronounced it right, and Hollison Miller. Welcome back alumni, let's take a tour. This fall, ref at the honor of organis- organizing reunion tours for the Raytown High School classes of nineteen eighty five and nineteen seventy five, and the Raytown South High School uh class of nineteen seventy five. We were greeted by Raytown and Raytown South staff and students who led us through the building, provided explanations of how learning takes place today, helped by new technology, and shared what they are learning and their plans for the future. The alumni was very impressed with the students, the new school improvements, and that the banner with sports records remained exactly the same. Upcoming events, Rockin' in Raytown, six to seven thirty PM on October twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, at the Raytown South Middle School. Join us for a night of laughter, dancing, friends and families. Rockin' in Raytown is designed for pre-K through fifth grade students and their families. There will be a DJ, a photo, photo spot, temporary tattoos, and much more. Wear what's fun. It can be your most cozy, your most fancy, or your own original costume. Come prepared to rock the night away, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Now we have the annual secretary to the board report. This motion. Motion made a second. Is there a motion for local food for schools grant?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education accept the local food for schools additional grant funding in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars on behalf of the Raytown School District.
Second.
Motion made a second. Any question? Motion passes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move the board accept a bid for the one year BM Ware renewal bid from CDWG for a total of sixty two thousand five hundred and twenty two dollars.
Motion made a second. Motion passes. Next, we'll have the uh enrollment study plan review. A motion will be made uh after the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. President. Excuse me, we just had me start that again. Good evening, Mr. President, Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Martin Knox, and our community staff and community members. Um, just about a year ago, we started the process of putting in a RFP to contract with a demographer to update and revise a demographic study to look at post-COVID um trends for student population. Uh, Cropper with Cropper GIS uh won that bid, and we started to work within last November. Uh, they hit the ground running, uh running, conducting that demographic report. We got those results, and what we continue to see is a declining enrollment over the next five and ten years. Um, that is nothing to be alarmed about, but what it does tell us is we have to start long range planning, and some of that work begins now. Um, and so what does that look like? That's again, not alarming if we can reduce our financial footprint, if we can reduce our physical footprint and align ourselves over that same period of time to reduced student attendance. Um, again, so Cropper GIS began that work. Um, and they looked at where we were headed with student enrollment, they looked at our priorities as a district, um, and also helped us engage the community uh to land at a couple of proposals. Uh, we took those to the community over a few community engagement sessions that were both virtual, in person, and had a active survey um soliciting feedback uh from our community. Uh, we also spoke with some of affected stakeholders last spring and established a timeline. Part of that timeline was to say we would have a plan proposed to the board by October of this year. Um, that was important to do in the full transparency to let people know what our plans were, uh because that's important. And so, and here we are, October, um, to talk to you about that proposal. We have with us tonight James Cooper from Cropper GIS uh who's been engaged in that work. Um, who's been leading a lot of that work, and we appreciate his uh, his work uh with us over this uh past year. Uh, but tonight, he's gonna work with the, he's gonna go through the results of that um survey and those community engagement studies. So at this time, uh, Mr. Cooper, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh Dr. Martin Knox and members of the board. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to present the work completed uh through the Raytown Quality Schools Enrollment Planning Study. Uh, this effort has been guided by a focus on long-term facility balance, uh efficient use of space, and the continued delivery of high-quality educational environments for all students. Uh, the information I'll share tonight summarizes the process, uh community engagement, and the database reasoning behind the internal planning team's recommendation. Uh, the rationale behind this study comes directly from the demographic and utilization forecast completed in May two thousand twenty five. Uh, that study found that district-wide enrollment is projected to decline modestly through two thousand thirty five, uh driven largely by aging housing stock, uh smaller incoming student cohorts, um and limited new housing development within the district boundaries. Uh, most schools are expected to remain between fifty five percent and eighty percent utilization uh under current boundaries. Uh, this means that while facilities are generally adequate, some are under-enrolled, while others experience while others experience moderate crow, uh, crowding. These findings prompted the district to begin a proactive, uh, enrollment planning, not as a short-term boundary fix, but as a forward-looking effort to balance utilization, uh, reduce future capital, uh, expenditures and position the district to support evolving academic programs. So the enrollment process was guided by a clear set of, uh, objectives approved by the board. Uh, these include maximizing use of district facilities to ensure efficient allocation of space and resources, uh, reducing capital expenditures by optimizing existing buildings before considering future construction, um, aligning, uh, school capacities with current and projected enrollment levels, um, supporting program expansion and, and innovation, particularly programs that enhance student achievement in college, uh, or career readiness, um, and providing equitable supporting learning environments across all neighborhoods within the district. Uh, together, these objectives ensure the district's long-term planning is both fiscally responsive, responsible, excuse me, and, uh, educationally sustainable. So to achieve, achieve these, uh, objectives, uh, the district and Cropper G I S Consulting, uh, implemented a multi-phase enrollment planning process. Uh, it began with a data-driven assessment, compiling enrollment trends, demographic projections and facility capacity data um, from the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, the team then developed enrollment, uh, forecast for each building through two thousand thirty-five. Um, next capacity and utilization models were built to visualize where excess capacity exists and where crowding could occur in the future. Uh, these findings provided the foundation for exploring potential, uh, exploring potential adjustments to school boundaries, uh, grade configurations and program placements. Uh, throughout the process, the internal planning team maintained close alignment with the board's planning criteria and the district's strategic goals. Uh, the work was progressive with each stage, uh, building upon verified data and prior board guidance. So the internal planning team, um, which is made up of district leadership and staff representatives, uh, met regularly through, uh, to review data, analyze potential scenarios and test how adjustments could impact utilization and demographics. Um, initially, four options were explored. Um, after a preliminary review, two known as option green and option orange were developed further um, and shared publicly. Um, option green proposed shifting to a K-six elementary, uh, configuration and repurposing central middle school for alternative district use. Um, option orange, by contrast, maintained the current grade configurations K-five, six through eighth and nine through twelve while creating space at central middle school for the RSA program, allowing that program to return from its least location uh, into a district-owned facility. The I P T, um, ultimately found that option orange achieved the most, uh, balanced utilization without, with the least disruption to the students. Uh, this option also provided program flexibility without, uh, requiring major, major capital investment, aligning closely with the project, uh, objectives. So community engagement was a central, uh, component of this process. Uh, a public information session, uh, was held on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, followed by an online survey, um, that was open from September eighteenth until, uh, September thirtieth. Uh, a total of seventy-eight participants completed the survey, uh, providing feedback on both, on both draft options. Uh, the results clearly indicated a community preference for option orange. Um, at the elementary level, option orange received approximately fifty-four percent approval while option green saw around sixty-one percent disapproval. Um, at the middle school level, option orange approval was fifty-seven percent compared to sixty percent disapproval for, uh, option green. High school results followed a similar pattern with majority preference leaning towards the less disruptive orange configuration. Uh, respondents cited minimal student disruption, um, maintenance of existing grade configurations and logical feeder patterns as key strengths of option orange. Uh, these findings reinforced the internal planning team's, uh, conclusion that option orange best met the district's goals while maintaining public support. So the maps on this slide show the recommended, uh, boundaries for all three grade levels, elementary, middle and high school. Um, at the elementary level, changes are minimal, uh, primarily affecting a few neighborhoods between Fleet Ridge Elementary and Laurel Hills, um, elementary in the north um, and then Spring Valley, uh, West Ridge and Southwood attended zones in the south to improve utilization and balance. At the middle school level, approximately fifty, uh, students would move from Raytown Central Middle School to Raytown Middle School to accommodate for that RSA program's, uh, relocation. Excuse me. At the high school level, only about sixty-five students are affected by boundary adjustments, uh, maintaining balanced enrollment between Raytown and Raytown South High Schools. Overall, these adjustments impact fewer than two hundred and fifty students district-wide while achieving improved balance and long-term flexibility across facilities. The recommendation statistical handout provides the complete measurable outcomes of this plan. Um, district-wide average utilization across all schools is, is projected to remain stable around seventy-three to seventy-five percent through two thousand thirty-five, ensuring each building is used, uh, efficiently but not over capacity. Uh, the plan maintains demographic balance, uh, which closely align with the current levels. Uh, it also maintains the district's feeder pattern integrity, reducing splits to only one elementary to middle school split and only one middle school to high school split in the transition. Um, this option supports district program expansion, uh, release some, some, some facility pressure and improves the geographic distribution of enrollment, uh, without major boundary disruption. Financially, it positions the district to avoid unnecessary capital projects while maximizing existing facility use. So in summary, the internal planning team's recommend, recommended plan fulfills the goals established by the board at the outset of the study. Um, it maintains existing grade structures, balancing, balancing utilization, provides equitable access to programs and does so with the least disruption to students and families. Uh, this recommendation reflects both the data-driven, uh, analysis conducted throughout the study as well as the feedback received, uh, from the community. Um, it represents a practical, sustainable approach that allows the district to remain flexible in future planning efforts as enrollment and community needs continue to evolve. Um, thank you for your time and continued guidance throughout this process. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to support the district's long-term vision uh, for efficient and equitable facility use. Um, and that's all I have and I'll open the floor to any questions you may have.
Members, members?
Oh, thank you. So I'll be watching. So we watch this, uh, going, usually it's been very mindful of everything, being mindful of the students, the students, students and I appreciate.
President, so the consensus you got these off the surveys from the feedback that you got back from the right time residents.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that for me?
You got the feedback that you're going off of these analysis you got back from the right time residents and?
Yeah, so yeah, it was based off the survey and as well as some of the discussions that we had, um, um, you know, around the maps. Following the presentation on, on the eighteenth, there was a gallery walk around the map where we got to speak with a lot of the community residents as well. Um, and then we also had a webinar, a version of that, um, on, I believe it was September twenty-fourth, um, where there was a Q and A following the presentation as well. We, we got a little bit more feedback, um, a little bit more insight, um, as well as throughout the entire process, yes.
Okay.
Um, so now with your expertise, would you say that seventy-eight participants would be, you know, good representation of the community feels?
Ideally, ideally you would, would, would want a few bit more, but at, at the same time, the survey respondents, um, typically just kind of give you an insight to, to how the community feels. Um, a lot of the, the internal planning team members have been having a lot of discussions with community members along the way. So while the seventy-eight does seem like a, a minute number compared to, you know, the student enrollment in such a large district, um, it, it kind of piggybacks and, um, reemphasizes some of the discussions that, um, you know, the superintendent and some of the internal planning team members have been having, uh, along this process and kind of reinforces the, the sentiment that option orange is, is a bit more favorable from the community members.
Anything else, buddy? Back to Martin Knox?
Yes.
You, uh, I know the board likes to hear, uh, from you as well.
So first, um, I'd like to thank Mr. Cooper and Cropper G I S, uh, for the work that they've done and, you know, to echo the sentiments of Dr. Douglas, um, just working with a partner who, uh, has really listened uh, to our community, has taken the information, has examined our community, has examined the work and just didn't put a plan or plans in place, um, just to say they've done some work. Um, they've come forward with multiple plans, multiple options with multiple conversations, uh, and, and just having dialogue along the way and kind of knowing your community. Uh, the recommendation that is being brought forward, I think that it is necessary for us to begin, but I think it also allows us to do so in a less disruptive manner. The last thing we want to do is disrupt our students and their journey in school, uh, to disrupt the community, but we know this is work that has to take place. Um, I think the work that proper G I S has provided us allows us to also forecast moving out as mu, as far as ten years, um, just with options that we can move forward to because as indicated, our enrollment's going to decline because of the aging population that we serve, um, the lack of growth, if you will, in the community, uh, because of housing. Um, these are conversations that we engage in with the city, um, just to make sure that we're maximizing. We have an amazing community here. Uh, and I can only speak from my experience as a superintendent and from being a, a community member. Um, I think the work that we've done, um, or that has been done with collaboration with proper G I S is, is truthful. It's honest, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's necessary, um, and it kind of, um, is not as noisy and busy, if you will. Um, there will be savings with this approach, uh, if the board approves it moving forward. Um, while we also have had some comments and conversations with our community, particularly as it pertains to how we educate sixth graders, that information does not go away um, because we will always continue to plan to do as best and what's right for our community, for our students and for our staff. And so the orange option, uh, if the board, uh, approves and moves forward, I support the recommendation that's being brought forward, uh, by proper G I S. I also will always be transparent with my leaders in the district and so they will come to me and tell me whether they like or dislike or even coming because I always say you spend two minutes on the problem, ten minutes on the solution. Um, and so they have brought recommendations and ideas, but this is just the beginning. This is a recommendation. So the work truly begins after we decide the direction we're going to go in, uh, because now the planning will begin, uh, whatever we choose to do, but I'm in support of this recommendation uh, because it is the voice of our community, whether it's seventy-eight or seven thousand eight hundred. Um, it's the voice and they've spoken and again, we heard the voices both qualitatively and quantitatively. And so, um, making this recommendation to the board is totally supported by me.
Is there a motion?
I, I move that the board approve the orange enrollment plan that's presented.
Motion made, seconded. Senator, you said? Uh, motion passes. Thank you.
And if I may, we will follow up. Um, thank you again, Mr. Cooper. Um, we will follow up with communications with our community, with our schools, uh, in terms of the discussion this evening uh, and the approval of the orange option, uh, for our move forward, um, and hashtag we are Raytown.
All right.
Mr. President, just, just minor question. So you guys are going to develop some procedures then about how to move forward, like, especially my question will be about juniors and seniors. Juniors and seniors will have some flexibility for juniors and seniors that are affected.
There, there shouldn't be any that are affected, but if there are, um, we will.
You said fifty high school students?
Middle school or elementary into, sorry.
Okay, but I thought you said fifty high school students between Raytown High and Raytown South to balance enrollment.
We will make sure that those individuals receive communication and that they will be grandfathered.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant by flex.
Good question. Thank you.
Okay, next we have, uh, folks read concerning virtual courses. Just for information, you guys had? Yep.
We got the board approved, uh, October thirteenth, twenty twenty five, September.
Motion made a seconded. I do have some donations to read, uh, prior to the vote. A donation of eight book bags with school supplies worth eight hundred dollars from Ivanhoe U C C to Robinson Elementary School. Donation of school supplies of two hundred dollars from American Family, Deanna Poston Sebo to Southwood Elementary School. A donation of a thousand dollar cash donation to the Pasquale Moore, from the Pasquale Moore Law, um, firm foundation to Raytown High School Football. Raytown South, it, it didn't say South, but thank you. Order. Donation of forty dollars and twenty-five cents from Kayla Gilio, um, at American Century Investments to Robinson Elementary School. A donation of backpacks, tissues and miscellaneous school supplies worth two hundred and fifty dollars from Hope Network to Robinson Elementary School. Donation of back-to-school night supplies, chips and paper sacks, hot dog wraps worth a hundred dollars from Ascension Lutheran to Northlea Elementary School. Those are all our donation and as always, we greatly appreciate it. Uh, it's greatly needed and the kids certainly, uh, are thankful for it and really enjoy it. So thank you very much for, uh, support from our community. Now we can vote. Motion passes.
We have the board of Orange, uh, we're ready for the voting. The decision meeting at seven forty-three.
Motion made a seconded. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.